I'd like to call this meeting into order, please. The first item is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved with the Board of Supervisors hereby interested in to close meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: consultation with legal counsel and briefing from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or the litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of the legal advice by such counsel. And that's on our fringe benefit program. The next one is discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose and disposition of publicly held property where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body. And that's the Iolagania Springs Consolidated Site. And number one is discussion consideration or interviews of proposed candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the public body. And for that, we have the Community Service Board, Library Board, Social Service Board, Transportation Technical Committee for the Roanoke Valley Area MPO and Personnel. Do you have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Close meeting. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. The first item on the agenda is do order closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the next item on the agenda is certification of closed meeting where as the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where as section 2.2-3711 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved with the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. A roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Only for the time I was there. Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next item on the agenda is our invocation, and I'd like to take a couple of moments of silence and please stand. In following our invocation, we will have our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Meadows.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the Burgs section of the Roanoke Times on June 27th and July 4th. It's an ordinance amendment, Chapter 10, zoning section 10-6, in accordance amending in accordance amending Chapter 10 of zoning section 10.61 of the County Code of Montgomery, Virginia. By amending the language defining the term telecommunications tower attached by prohibiting co-locating the telecommunications tower antenna on a flagpole or private utility poles and by extending how high an antenna may extend above ... Okay. How high an antenna may extend above the 20 feet. And who's presenting it?
Yeah, I'll ...
Okay.
Just to give you some context, the way our ordinance is structured dealing with telecommunications, telecommunications towers is we treat telecommunications towers and then telecommunications towers attached as different. Telecommunications towers is when someone comes in, is building up from the ground, and under those circumstances, they have to get a special use permit. So they're coming in, they're bringing in the structure, and then they're putting the antennas on top of the structure. Telecommunications tower attached is when you have an existing tower or structure and someone's just coming in and putting antennas or co-locating on an existing structure. And under those circumstances, the Board allowed those by right, meaning they can just come in and they just have to get a building permit, which is administrative approval, not legislative. So it's not a yes or no, but just whether they're doing it right or not. And so we allowed those, and you want to allow those because you want to promote co-locating instead of people coming in and wanting to build new towers because of the land use impacts of new towers. And so what happened was in circumstance before us is someone was trying to get around this situation, and they were saying, okay, well, I'm gonna build a flagpole and then I'm gonna put an antenna on. Well, that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about existing structures and not someone trying to get around. And so when someone came in and say that, Derry did the right thing, made the determination that what they were building was a telecommunications tower, not a flagpole. And that was based on evidence that we were able to obtain from the contractor who said, we asked him, what do you build? And he said, well, I'm building telecommunications towers. He didn't say he was building a flagpole. And also, the company that was paying bills was AT&amp;T and not the private property owner who would be putting up a flagpole. And so we took care of that. So we wanted to kind of close that, what we saw as a possible loophole. And so with the definition, we're just changing the definition to telecommunications tower attached, which means we're limiting when someone can co-locate without getting your approval within SUP. And what we've taken away is, we've taken away all private flagpoles because we heard from you not only that you don't think any antenna should be on a flagpole, and so you have that right to take that away. And also private utility poles where someone could just put a pole, say they're putting it up to bring power to their barn, but in real circumstance, they're really building stuff and they're gonna put an antenna on it. And so we've taken those two away. The 20 feet is to comply with an exist, a recent change under federal law that says when you're co-locating an antenna, you have to allow it to at least go 20 feet higher than the existing structure. It used to be 10 feet, now it's 20 feet. And that's just talking about the whipped antenna. And so what that means is if you have an existing silo or you have an existing tower or like an AEP structure, they can put an antenna on there, but it can't go any higher than 20 feet above the tip of that structure without getting a special use permit. And so that's why that's there as well. So if you have any questions or concerns, I can address them.
Any questions, the Board?
One of the issues that came up during the planning commission was, is this gonna affect someone doing amateur radio, ham radio, as referred to? Do you believe that this statute is going to have any impact on anyone doing amateur radio?
Right, no, I don't. But it was interesting that Joel Dany brought that up from the planning commission, and he brought it up through Steve, and I talked to him at length about it last week and wrote him an email. When we were looking at this issue and I was, we were trying to figure out the enforcement of what we had and what they were trying to do, we looked at what we call amateur radio or amateur radio antennas, and there's amateur radio towers that's addressed in some localities, but we don't address that. The only thing we address is with radio antennas of the private nature, which is the AM radios, is that you can't limit their height less than 75 feet, and that's under state law. State law says you can't pass zoning ordinances that say you're gonna limit them under 75 feet. Now, what the state law doesn't do is dictate where you allow them and what district you allow them in your zoning. And we really don't address that. And so what I told Steve is, we need to do that, and that needs to be addressed right away. But I recommended to him that we not do it with this because this is more of an immediate need that we want, you know, we want change right away. And in fact, if the Board is okay with it, I would ask that you approve it tonight after the public hearing so that the change is done and it's closed and we don't have to worry about it anymore. At the same time, what I told Board Member Joel was that, Mr. Dany, was that why not we, why not have the planning commission initiate a change to go ahead and address ham radios? Because I think it needs to be done, and I think you need to dictate where you're gonna allow those by right and where you're gonna allow them by an SUP, knowing you can't limit their height to less than 75 feet. And so that's something that we think it needs to be addressed on its own, it needs to be studied. It could take a little bit of time, not a lot of time, but yeah, maybe a month or two.
And that should be something that we should refer back, we as Board Supervisors should refer back to the planning commission, correct?
Yes. I think it'd be good if the Board could adopt a resolution tonight just saying to ask the planning commission to initiate amendments addressing ham radio or what they call amateur radio antennas and amateur radio towers, and then bring it back to you with a recommendation at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a little problem with the amateur radio part of it because those are individuals, most of them are in the area of safety, and they're gonna be in residential neighborhoods, mostly because they're at their homes. And, you know, unless you have a covenant in your homeowners association or something, I don't see how we could really limit a whole lot of that. We'll let the planning commission look at that.
Right, but we could have a very broad that allows them to have those things and make sure that they're protected. One of the things was the concern of the one planning commission was this somehow affects somebody, let's say I've got a 75-foot ham radio tower and I've had it up for years. We wanted to make sure that in any way, at least that was their concern, that this somehow is gonna affect it. And that's not the intention of this resolution. But I agree that ham radio is very useful, it's a good hobby, it's also public safety issues, so those are all good aspects. I'm just thinking that perhaps we might want to spell it out and protect those individual rights so they know that they've got that.
Okay.
It's something that we can at least refer back to the planning commission and make a decision.
All right. All right. Any other questions, the Board of Comments? And is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue? If so, please come to the podium, say your AM address, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is the public address, and we have one person signed up for public address. If you'll please come forward, say your name, address, and you'll have five minutes. Mr. Gordon.
Good evening, Board and County Staff. Marty Gordon, 1477 Mary McRoe. Wanted to bring several things up tonight. Of course, six months ago, I brought something to your attention, and I'm hoping you're not forgetting. As I drive by the old courthouse every day, it looks like the skeleton remains of that building is finally coming down, and they're getting ready to go to the next floor. Please don't forget our eagle. I still have a lot of concern that the original plans for the new courthouse, even before Craig was here, that two-story open area was supposed to be the new home of our eagle. It was supposed to have been removed to the inside. I'm still upset it's not there. A lot of people are upset it's not there. If you remember, six months ago, I brought it to your attention that we took a camera and got behind it and looked into the hole and saw there was both a bird's nest and a bee's nest in there. I've been told by workers, they haven't noticed any birds or bees lately, but there is two holes to the back of our eagle. I've been working continuously and working, I mentioned it to Craig several times over the last six months. I'm still trying to find a family in connection to the eagle that donated it to the county. We have linked it to the same eagle that's on the old cell courthouse that's on the campus of Rhode College now. The same architect and the same family paid for both. That's a possibility there. But I'm hoping that as you continue to renovate that building, that even if there's not any money, that you look to put some money into the repair of the eagle. Whether it stays at that point, the architect, I've met with him twice, they've recommended a change in the color and the brick and possibly the eagle itself to be restored back to the old color to remain in the area. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that, but that probably is gonna have to be the problem now, how are you gonna take the windows out of the new courthouse and put it inside? I still would like to see it protected from the weather because that's what's caused the hole in our eagle. Have met several times with members of the Historical Society and the museum, and what we would like to be, see done, and I'd like still for you guys to consider and the Board to consider, is a possible independent steering committee to help with the restoration and any future plans of that eagle. I mean, that's the main thing that's still left from our old courthouse. You know, I again had hoped it would be part of the new courthouse. It didn't end up being that way, but we need to take care of that eagle. It's a big part of our history, and we seem to be forgetting history, to be honest, in this community. And I think the Board needs to step up and take care of that. A couple of other things I wanted to bring to your attention. Also, six months ago, I spoke in front of the Board concerning what you're gonna talk about in work session, the animal shelter. I still support it greatly. But we need to go back in history again. Six years ago, the original plans to clear that property, you bought the former construction site behind this building. You need to think about in your work session tonight, moving the garage first to the site that you bought for the garage in order to clear that site and get rid of any contaminants before you even consider the animal shelter on that site. We need to take care of stuff in the order that it was supposed to be in, and what the Board had talked about five and six years ago was moving that garage, eliminating that garage from that site, and that would open it up for the possible animal shelter. But we need to think of that as you go into your work session tonight. The other thing, I want to praise the county, and I don't know if many of the Board have been told about this yet, maybe Craig will bring it up later. You got a lot of money this past week for some surplus property. A picnic shelter that I was told that you didn't expect $5,000 for, you got $41,000 for. Yeah, a lot of people have been questioning why you sold a picnic shelter in recreation area, but there's vandalism and everything else associated with that. But you put that back on the tax roll. And the county needs to be recognized for that. There was at least four pieces of property put back on the tax roll that no longer belongs to the county. And the person who bought that picnic shelter has been a builder partners. That's the plan. Well, that will generate a lot of tax revenue. And praising the county that you're finally gonna auction off the Ellison-Lofahet site here in the next couple of weeks, and that will put it back on the tax roll too. So praise the county and the county staff for finally getting that done. But please, remember the eagle and think about the garage as part of this animal shelter project, because you need to eliminate the garage before the animal shelter can even be thought about. Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak at public address? Come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Jason Shelton, 1304 Valley Drive, Blacksburg. I'm just here, we're here tonight. We've got several Board Members, I just wanted to say we're here when you guys get to work session. If you have any questions for us, just let us know.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll close this public address. And there are no addendums?
No, sir, not this evening.
The next item is concern agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Been moved in second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item is to go into work session. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lettis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And the item in the work session is animal shelter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm gonna go down to the front, to the podium, to lead Well, good evening, Board Members. I did want to take an opportunity this evening to actually come down here and present from here. This is an item that I know that we've talked about a number of times in the past, and I wanted the opportunity this evening to share some information with you and hopefully get some direction from the Board as to the next steps regarding the animal shelter. It's hard to believe, but I've been here in another week, I've been here four years as county administrator. The time has really flown by, and in those four years, we've addressed a number of critical issues during that time. Over the last four, over the last four years, we spent in excess of $178 million on schools, two elementary schools, two high schools, and we're getting ready to renovate a middle school. We spent over $29 million on courthouse and public facilities for public safety, with a new courthouse and renovation for a public safety building. And I'm hopeful that tonight, after we go through this presentation, that you'll agree that it's time for us to put some money towards an animal shelter. We've reached a point that we can't continue in the manner that we have in the past. First off, I wanted to spend a little time reviewing with you the current facility and show you through pictures several of our current issues at the facility. The current animal shelter was constructed in 1976 and had a rear addition completed in 1981. And as best we can tell, that's the last time any money was spent on the facility, was 1981. The facility is a little over 4,000 square feet and contains 36 indoor and outdoor dog rooms. And as you well know, it does not accept cats. As Marty pointed out a little earlier, the current animal shelter is located on Cinnabar Road, and it's behind the county garage and PSA operations facility. And I failed to put on this slide that it also is where we house some of our landscaping operations as well. But the picture that you see here is of the garage, and unless you know the animal shelter's back there, you really don't notice it. Right now, we currently average 31 dogs per day at the shelter. Last year, the facility handled 738 animals. Of those animals, 287 were claimed back by their owners, 267 were adopted, 90 were transferred to other rescue groups, 63, which I thought was impressive. Only 9% of the animals were euthanized, and 31 remained in the shelter at year end. Over the last six years, as best I can tell from the information that we gathered from staff, we've had several discussions about the animal shelter. In September 2007, the staff was instructed to gather data on the animal shelter and begin looking at what needed to be done moving forward. In November 2008, the county issued an RFP for a needs assessment and facility study. In January of 2009, the Board was briefed on the status of the assessment and the study. Also, in that same month, there was an initial meeting with Shelter Planners of America who were hired to do the study for the, of new shelter. The report from them was issued in December 2009. In June 2010, a presentation of the report findings were made to the Board. And then just this past year, the Board appropriated a billion dollars towards the animal shelter facility. There's two presentations that I'm gonna ask Carol to hand out. One was a presentation that was done in 2009, and the second one was one that was done in 2010. And mainly, I'm asking that you receive those just for information to kind of refresh the items that were discussed at those times. And I should've said this at the beginning, and I should've offered apologies to Jason. I pretty much plagiarized one of your PowerPoint presentations.
Goodbye.
I liked the colors, I liked the fonts. I said, you know, it's crazy to reinvent the wheel, so if you see some stuff and go, hey, that looks like my stuff. I appreciate the work, just saving me some time. But the next couple of slides that I'm gonna share with you are pictures that were provided by Jason and his folks, and they clearly outline a number of the issues and the frustrations that our volunteers are currently dealing with at the shelter. This is, this represents a couple of pictures of the shelter entrance. This is what reaches, you come in the front door. We do have a pretty serious sag over the front door roof area that doesn't appear to be an imminent structural issue, but has been there for a while and needs to be corrected. These pictures show some of the issues with the current structure in terms of the foundation, mainly the concrete. Again, this building was built in 1976. It has been repeatedly scrubbed and cleaned and sterilized, and that, over a period of time, concrete begins to erode away and dissolve. And what you've got there, a couple of pictures of the crumbled exterior runs and in the bottom two show concrete that have some mold damage. The next two slides, we have a wooden cover over the outdoor septic system, the connection to the septic system. That has been covered and repaired, but it's not been permanently addressed. The bottom picture shows more crumbling concrete between two kennels, just overall deterioration of the facility. These are other pictures of the kennel facility, rusted out bottom of gates, rust around one of the latches and the deteriorated wall conditions. The lower two show a leash being wrapped around the chain of one of the kennels to keep the dog from escaping. One of the questions I was asked, and I know one of the frustrations for the volunteers have been, why aren't these things being fixed? Why aren't these things being addressed in a more direct manner? The issue that we have with this facility is it has deteriorated to a point that the best that staff can do is apply Band-Aids to the damages. My analogy with Supervisor Biggs was that it's like having a 1976 car with 350,000 miles on it that's rusted out the transmission slip. You can spend money on fixing it, but you've still got a 1976 car with 350,000 miles in the transmission slip. We've done all we can do short of radical structural reconstruction of this building. These pictures show the inside of the cage, of one of the cages that we can't use at the moment because the wall anchors are broken, again because of deterioration of the structure itself. And then, of course, the bottom corner of the gate is also broken. This is kennel, this is another kennel where you can see problems with the chain link fencing in the upper picture. The right picture shows the trough that collects runoff and how it's deteriorated as well. These are other pictures of the kennel doors that we've had an issue with. This is one particular door where we had a dangerous dog, and as the animal control officer tried to remove that dog, the door just basically snapped. And that puts the animal control officer in a very dangerous situation because some of these dogs can be quite vicious. This is the heat source for the back 20 kennels of the facility. Is it adequate? Yes. Is it what needs to be there for the long term? Absolutely not. This is an interesting slide regarding some of the other issues with the shelter. We do have infestation of stink bugs. Is that cleared up any, or is it still?
It's a matter of when others answer.
That's because of the moisture. I know. We had to recently remove an Epiola jacket from the roof where we've got damage in one of the hofflets. I think they've tried to work on that. I think they've tried to work on that. And then, we had one adventuresome dog named Coco that figured out how to climb out the top of the kennels. And that's just the deficiency in the way the kennels were designed. One of the issues that some of you may have heard about recently relate to flooding at the shelter. This has been a very wet year. But anytime we've had excessive rain at the shelter, we've had issues with standing water, and then, in some cases, water that actually enters the building. You can't use one of the cages during rain because of the drainage. Also, looking out the door, you can see water in the parking lot, and the water will flood into the office fairly regularly. Here's a couple of other pictures of the water as it surrounds the building. So, as you can see, it's a very tired building that needs some help. And what I wanted to spend a few minutes talking with you tonight on is how do we move this project forward? I know that this has been discussed for a number of years. I know that the study was done, I know there's been presentations made. But we're to a point, quite candidly, that I'm very concerned for the future of that shelter. And one thing that I'm every bit as concerned about in terms of the care of the animals, I'm concerned for this group that's sitting here behind me, these volunteers. We have a very dedicated volunteer group that helps us. We've talked about our Volunteers for Fire and Rescue and what they do for the community. These guys back here save the county a tremendous amount of money in what they do and the effort that they expend to get these animals adopted, to take care of these animals, to go into this building that I just showed you and deal with some of the conditions that they deal with. If this group walks, we're gonna have a big problem. And it's gonna be a very expensive problem to address. Not even talking about the building, I'm talking about personnel and what we're gonna have to deal with. Right now, and I apologize if this isn't the easiest map to see, the building that's on the upper right, let's see if I can use it, Carol. This building right here is the current animal shelter property. These are the landscaping and, or building and grounds and PSA work sheds, and this is the garage. The county tract of land runs basically here. It actually goes down way behind the property because the property that backs up to this is the old landfill. But the reason we basically drew a false line right here is this is really all the property that you can work with. Beyond that, it falls off pretty quick and gets into the other areas. This piece of property here is also owned by the county. It's a piece that's adjacent to the garage. And this piece that I'm gonna talk to you briefly about is another piece of property that's privately owned by another party. But this is the current layout, of course, this is US 74, right here. As we've talked and has been presented to the Board over the last couple of years, I think there's a couple of alternatives that we need to begin discussion and consideration and get some direction on. The first one would be to construct a new animal shelter facility entirely on county property on Cinnabar Road. I think that's what originally had been discussed back in the earlier years. But as the Speaker pointed out earlier, that requires the relocation of the garage and the PSA operations. If we build what had been proposed totally on county property, if I can go back. You could use the property that's here that's unoccupied, but in order to make the site work, you have to get into this area here, which pulls into the garage. So that is one option that could be considered. Another alternative is to construct an animal shelter facility on land owned by the county and also on the adjacent private parcel on Cinnabar Road. The concerns with that are you'd have to acquire the property. The positives of that is it would probably provide an opportunity for a public-private partnership, either with that developer or a development group. And it would also, in the short term, meaning that you would not have to relocate the garage immediately. You could actually reorient the facility so that it would be on these two parcels here. The third alternative right now that I think we need to be thinking about is, is do we construct a new facility on land yet to be determined? The challenge with that is, we've land yet to be determined. We don't really have a recommendation for that now. Tonight, what I'd like to ask that the Board discuss, and hopefully, not looking for a vote tonight, not looking for a decision on where we go from here in terms of building something tomorrow, but we do need some direction from the Board. And the points that I came up with that I think we need to talk about, one, is the Board prepared to move forward with the Shelter Planters of America plan for a new facility that was discussed back in 2009? The Board has seen that plan, it's been discussed, but there's never been any commitment to whether or not the Board wants to move forward with that. The second option, or the second item needed, is what options would the Board like for staff to consider as funding options for a new facility? This facility, the Board's already set aside a million dollars, as I mentioned earlier, for this facility. The Board does have reserves that could cover the entire cost of a new facility. That would be a significant amount from the reserves to cover that, but you do have the money, should the Board desire, that this be a priority to move forward with that completely from cash reserves. The other alternative is, as I mentioned earlier, if you were to look at a public-private partnership, there may be opportunities for a lease, a design-lease-purchase-type arrangement. That does result in some debt, but the Board may desire to put a portion of the reserves and a portion of debt and move forward in that manner. Third item, what timetable would the Board like to see in terms of a project schedule? I don't, as I've told several of you, I don't think, well, I know we can't continue to simply talk about this challenge. We've got to begin to address it, and we need to lay out a timetable for how we're gonna address it. And then, the fourth item, as always with anything we bring to you, what additional information does the Board need from staff in order to move forward? I know this is a challenging issue. I know from talking with several of you over the last couple of weeks, there's a divergence of opinion on how we address this issue. My concern tonight that I just feel very strongly about is we can't not do anything any longer. We have to move forward in some direction. I do have one other item that I wanted to hand out, and that's an email, and I believe you guys got this some months ago from Jason. Jason, this is the email that you sent where you were just very concerned about how things work. We've been very, 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 very fortunate that between our volunteers and between county staff, we've been able to keep this facility operating in the condition and age that it's in. I don't know how much longer that can continue. I worry about our volunteers, I worry about our staff in terms of just trying to keep things repaired and keep things patched up. But, Mr. Chair, with that, I'll come back to the desk and sit down, but just need some direction and help on how to proceed with this challenging issue.
I want us to start the conversation.
Well, I can start it, and I think everybody knows how I feel about it. The time has long passed due, and we need to act now. And I'm just very passionate about the fact that this needs to be addressed before something really serious happens. If you just look at those pictures, if you go there, I understand we're going there on a road viewer's tour on Friday. I mean, we need to act. Now, it seems like, I think probably everyone's in agreement that we need to act, but now, the discussion revolves around how should we act and where the money comes from. And I'm glad to hear tonight, finally, that we can identify that we do have the capability of doing something and paying for it. I'm sitting here thinking that, okay, 1976, I was 25 years old, I'm now 62. That's 37 years ago. That that, and I remember what it was like when I came back here to live in 1975, and I remember how different the county is now. But we've kept the same animal shelter, except for a little bit of expansion in 1981. And we really, we really need to do something for our animals and our citizens. I mean, we're really behind where we should be with the county that we have. Now, my preference is to move forward and to get something done and not dilly-dally around for two years, three years, four years, five years. My preference is, if we're gonna get into a discussion about the garage, I'm more passionate about animals than I am about cars and trucks. That's just me, okay? If you have to move a garage in order to start an animal shelter, to keep it where you wanna keep it, then I think I would have to be of the opinion that we need to be doing both at the same time. We can't just, in my opinion, this is my opinion, I feel so passionate about this. Can't be out building the garage and letting animals sit there and nothing happening. I just, our volunteers, our people, it's just not right. So, you know, however the Board feels about how we go about doing it, I guess my passion to you is that it needs to be, you know, and I'll shut up for now and someone else can take it, put their two cents in.
Ms. Creed?
Yeah, a couple of things I would like to see done in order to move forward. I'd like to see us, as of immediately, have a dollar-for-dollar campaign in which we offer all the citizens a chance to put their dollar up and the county will match it. I think that would be good for us, it would be good for the people who matched it. It would just be a good way to go to start to bring in a number of dollars. The second thing we need to do is find out how many different spaces might be in this new dog shelter, or dog and cat shelter, or animal shelter, however we're gonna call it. And sell spaces, that is, put people's name on these spaces. And these spaces will, you know, can bring, according to what they are, you know, it's a real nice space up front where everybody comes in and sees that space. And these people want to really be known as dog lovers and truly are dog and cat lovers. That space might be $25,000. Some of the other spaces would go down to maybe even $1,000, $2,000. But all of it added up makes money. And let's show a way of helping that, and that should be something that we could do, like immediately. And I don't know, I know you haven't, I thought you, maybe, I don't know, you had a spring dog walk where you were trying to make money, I don't know whether that ever came to pass or not, but that was a good idea. I think that either did or would've worked. But let's start something that is positive and move forward out of that. If that doesn't work, I can't imagine it not work. I can't imagine, excuse me, you calling any number of people in this county and say, "Hey, we're gonna try to build a dog shelter, and we have got a dollar-for-dollar match. For every dollar you'll give to help these animals, we're gonna give a dollar. So if you give 100, we're gonna give 100." And I think you find just numerous, numerous people that will do that. And you've got some folks that actually have some money that just might come in and say, "Hey, I'll give you a quarter of a million dollars," you know, that's been known to happen, "or half a million dollars," whatever the figure may be. And if we start down that road and it works, well and fine. If we go down that road and it doesn't work, then we still are well and fine because we have tried. And we have got interest up in the county to, for people to know that we're seriously about our dog and cat shelter, or animal shelter, I don't know what other kind of animal. We may even have something on the end of it there that would be something you'd keep some other kind of an animal, other than a dog or a cat that I'm not thinking of right now. But it's something that you might would have an overnight housing for a chimpanzee or a monkey or a rabbit.
Quite a few of them have pigs.
Or pig, or some chicken, not chicken.
Goat.
I think we'd pass on chickens. Unless they're real good-laying chickens, and then, you know, they might have a few there. But there's things right now, if this Board is willing to go forward and say, "Hey, we'll do that much," wouldn't they have enough money to build that sucker in a couple of months? Have it a two-month type thing that this is gonna happen? And if you set a date and a time and you put out what you're doing, it will happen. So, you know, those are just my recommendations, and I will be far.
Mr. Brown?
Ms. Creed, I praise you for the things that you said, but I don't think we as a Board can... It's fine to have that working over here, but on the other hand, we need to formulate a plan to move forward. And how we pay for that could come from some of the ideas that you're talking about. But regardless of whether it work or not work, we need to say, "Hey, this is how we want to move forward." And to be able to give consensus from this Board to the staff to move forward, I don't think any one of us can say, "Creed, we want you to move this way." No, it's gonna take the consensus of this Board to give the directions to move forward. I think that all that is fine, even too, I think that we have a public access channel. We can put some information up for people to make, if they wanna make donations to the county toward the animal shelter. Or that might be even where Dollar-for-Dollar Match may go on WTOB in Blacksburg and the government channel here, that we could reach out to a whole lot of people and see how those funds start coming in. But on the other hand, regardless of whether the county pays for it or citizens help pay for it, we just need to move, have a plan to move forward and not wait for proceeds to come in. But it's nice, it would be nice if somebody did come in to help.
Yeah, forgive me if I didn't bring that over clear enough. I am for moving forward from day one. But I think within that, you can still have this other going on, and people get excited about knowing, "Hey, this is going to happen. We need to get in on it if we're gonna try to help."
And I think too, I think when we look forward at the shelter, we need to look big picture. When I say big picture, what other items are facing the county? Like the detention home renovation. Round the rescue squad is busting out assumes they done doubled their volunteers. They'll be coming to us to, for some kind of expansion out there. The Blacksburg Rescue Squad is planning to build a new rescue facility, and I'm sure that they're gonna come to the county and says, "How much you gonna kick in on that?" The stormwater management is coming in 2014, which is a big-ticket item. Moving out the parking lot over here in their Falling Branch is probably gonna cost us some money to see that that's moved. And the last meeting I believe we had with the school board, they wanted like about $2 million annually just for upkeep of the schools. And I'm saying like, "Where we gonna get all that money at?" And then, it's another thing that we're gonna be, could possibly be looking at. I'm not saying it's so, but the SRO grant program, you know, that's not dead yet or going, moving forward yet. So, there's some things that we have to look at. Year before last, we put 12 cent taxes on people. This past year, we put two cents on people. And the people in my district are taxed out. So, when we look at the shelter and the critical need for it... So when we look at the shelter and the, the critical need for it, we have to look big picture on how we spend what money that we have. I just wanted to put that out there for people to think about.
Mr. Gabriel.
Yeah, I just had a question for Mr. Meadows. Could you explain a little bit more about the, the public-private partnership option? What you were thinking about that? I understand that, that, that parcel that you pointed out was privately held. But why would purchasing that allow for public-private partnership? Or perhaps I just misunderstood.
No, when I say public-private partnership, one of the things that we could do if the board is interested in moving forward is say that we have a plan for an animal shelter facility. We would like to find a development partner that could work with us to construct the facility, help acquire the land that's needed for the facility, and perhaps even finance the facility. I mean, there's, there's ways to move forward with the private sector. You know, traditionally, you know, the county would go out and purchase the property. Then we would hire an engineer to finalize the, the plans for the shelter. Then we'd go out to bids and take bids from various companies. If the board wanted to move this forward in a, in a quicker manner, one thing that you could do is put together an RFP that says, we have a general plan for a, a facility. It was done back in two thousand nine. You know, we'd like to find a partner that would be willing to work with us to help us acquire whatever property's needed, to help us finalize the design and construct it, construct it and even perhaps arrange for the financing. That's just an option that we could consider. You know, we can do it the traditional route or we could consider doing it that route.
Would the, the, the value of the latter, the, the partnership with the private industry, would that, the value of that would lay in its, the speed of construction? So it'd be similar to the schools?
Keeping it moving forward, yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't mind, a couple of things. Wanna see us move forward on animal shelter. I, I'm willing to, to do that. We've set aside a million dollars. That's a huge amount of money for me. And so the questions are, we've, we've talked about quite a bit with the school board about uniting facilities and trying to save money by maybe doing a, a joint garage where we're, we're dealing with school buses and like at this new facility. What I would like to see is, what would that price tag be for that facility? To be moving that behind here so we would have that. And also a commitment from the school board saying, okay, we're willing to try to see if this is gonna save us some costs, uh, our money over the long run. Obviously, upfront, that's gonna be expensive when we move it. That gets the building done. And at least so we know what we're talking about as far as money goes. To me, purchasing additional property, when we do have something that is, and, and through the course of these last two years, I've heard numerous people, especially the volunteers, we want it to be centrally located, we want it to be close to the vet's, uh, school where a lot of the volunteers come from. Um, so that, this seems to be the, the right location for it. We, we've got that plan in place, at least to move the facilities, the garage here. It makes sense for us to examine that. Then to me, I would like to look at, look, i- i- if we invest in, maybe we've got a million five to invest to do that and move forward with that. But also when we're looking for the designs of this facility, have it as part of the bid and design process that we wanna be able to add additional pods as we grow to be able to expand. And that's where, I, I guess, to, to meet the needs, rather than to build a shelter that's gonna last us thirty years, build a shelter that maybe lasts us ten years, but with the abilities to be able to add additions to it and to expand. That's what I, I'd like to look at. But I'd like to see some price tags and see what people could bring us and, and to start moving forward. My, my dog came from that shelter. I've been out there, I understand. And one of the first things that when my wife and I, we were looking at dogs and, and was the condition, not the, uh, of the shelter. And that's been probably four years ago. Uh, and I imagine it's not improved much since then. So then, that's kind of where you were looking for consensus. And as far as I'm concerned, that's where I'm at personally. And I'm willing to listen to other ideas. I really like what Gary's talking about. You know, sometimes, uh, there's a reason that churches say, hey, listen, would you like to, to make this in honor of one of your family members and the stained glass and those type of things? Well, you, you have a dog run named after somebody, you know, a loved one who, who wanted, who loved animals. So those are all things that we can start looking to address in, in my mind.
Amy.
Amy. I don't think you wanna hear what I have to say.
If I don't, I won't.
I, I do, um, um, I do agree, number one, we move forward. Number two, I don't think we've moved forward with a plan that's gonna take us a, a long amount of time. We need to move forward now. Otherwise, why did we set aside a million dollars? Was absolutely, I mean, that just blows my mind. Before we set aside the million dollars, we had architects come in and give us a design, give us a plan. It was a great plan. We, we had a special, uh, deal on it. And I think, um, those plans were good. I don't think that it, the plans were such that you couldn't add to them. You can add to anything. Depends on how you want to add to them over the long haul. But I do think that, number one, when we're considering the big-picture bill, and I, I think we have to, I know we do. But let me tell you, how long has it been that we've talked about an animal shelter? How long has it been? How long since nineteen eighty-one, since the last something was done to a building? Excuse me, I don't, I mean, all of these other things that, you know, are the big picture. And I agree, we need to look at those. But my goodness, the Rhino Rescue Squad, the other kind of activities. We know stormwater parking ride is extremely, extremely important. Schools and maintenance and SROs, those are things that have come up now. Yes, there are some that we need to address. But think about this, the animal shelter, it has been since nineteen eighty-one that we've really done anything to the animal shelter? How long has that been? When you stop and think about it? And how long has there been a need out there for that animal shelter? Then in addition to that, I see no problem with asking people to donate funds. We started talking about that a long time ago, that even when we first began, how could we get people to want to give? And we know, I care about my animals. I know if I believed in reincarnation, I'd wanna come back as a Perkins dog. Because that dog.
Was pretty good life.
They, they lived great lives. I had two that passed away. One of my, one of mine lived to be nineteen and the other one lived to be seventeen. And you can't tell me we didn't take care of them. So I don't, um, I don't think that there are any other issues other than the parking ride and the children over at Falling Branch that have to be done this minute and have to be done now. This is something that we have put off and put off and put off. And with all the plans we have and with the plan that we paid somebody to come in and tell us about, to me, that's a waste of money if, if you're not going to be using those, those plans. Yes, the public-private partnership can work. I agree. It depends on part of the financing of it. One of the, and, and that's all it is. Uh, the private, public-private partnership has to deal with the financing. We have to deal with the rest of it. But I also want to, to say that I have had citizens, I've had volunteers come to me and say, Ms. Perkins, you have to do something about the animal shelter. And I, so I ask them, what? And they tell me that the conditions are not good. They tell me of all the pictures that we saw, all of those things are happening. And frankly, I, I'm embarrassed. I'm terribly embarrassed that we have the ability to do something. I'd like to know how much money we have left over from last year. I know we haven't gotten an audit or any of those things. And we usually don't know about that until, um, you know, a little bit later on. But when you're talking about money, I'd like to know about that one too.
And the plan that you're talking about, that was roughly about three, as I recall.
A little over three million dollars.
But did that did not comp, uh, cover the roughly? And, and who knows exactly how much it cost, whether it's gonna cost us eight hundred thousand to build a new garage or a million dollars? So really, we're talking about a three million dollar plus dog shelter and then on top of that, a million dollars. So that's four million dollars. And if we were to use that millions in our reserves, so we're talking about reducing our reserves by three million dollars in our reserves, roughly eight million?
Right, eight million dollars, alright.
But, but that's only if we move the garage at the same time. If we go the other option, which Mr. Meadows suggested, and we look into purchasing the land, we don't have to move the garage.
No, we don't.
But that ends up, if we spend six hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand dollars more, that's adding to that price tag at three point one million. So now we're.
But that's not for the animal shelter.
But it's where the land purchase, but you, we're still paying out that money though.
If, it may be, but I'm saying, why, you, you have to look at what it is we're working with, Chris. And I agree, I know it's more money. But what I'm saying is, look at the condition of the animal shelter. Look at how long it's been that way. And then tell me that we have priorities that are more significant than that. And we've been talking about this for years.
I understand you've been talking about this. And when, and I look at priorities and I heard what Bill was saying. And, and I don't know, I always look at, it, it, when I read the paper, I read all of them. And I look at the foreclosures and it's Christiansburg, it's Christiansburg, it's Christiansburg.
It's Roanoke mostly.
Yes, no, but I'm talking about here in Montgomery County, it's my district. And so when we start talking about being taxed out, my folks feel like they're taxed out and they've been taxed out.
Well, I'm sure that's true, Chris. But if you're gonna spend money for the rest of these things, your people are gonna be more taxed out. So that's what I'm saying.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, we've got limits for what we can and can't do.
We do. But how am I going, you tell me, how am I going to explain to all of these people, these volunteers, other people who put their lives on the line a lot of times in this current animal shelter? How am I gonna explain to them that we have eight million dollars and yet we don't wanna give up a little bit of that to build an animal shelter?
We're not talking about a little bit. And if we do what you're saying, we're talking about a third of our reserves.
And?
Gone.
And?
And you have those reserves in case you have some catastrophic event to try to, what if we face another really bad economy and we need to try to utilize those reserves?
Well, Chris, what if the world comes to an end tomorrow? There's no way that when we get.
I guess we won't need to worry about that.
Can we stop this back and forth? And I'd like to say a couple of things myself.
Now, wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Look, can we?
Stop the back and forth and finish please.
I'll, I'll be happy to stop the back and forth.
We have an audience here, we have other board members.
Well, well, we are, this is a work session and in a work session, we can talk back and forth.
I know we can, but you're passing up, passing over everybody.
No, everybody else has had a chance, except you. Everybody on the board has had a chance, except you.
Right.
Well, you're the chair and you're the last person, sweetheart. It's okay, it's perfectly okay.
May I speak or are you?
No, I'm not. No, I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins.
Hey, hey, hey.
You were talking about a couple of schoolteachers, whatever. I'll tell you what, they're, they're tough to deal with, I'll tell you.
Well, Jim, I'm gonna be back because I read a little quote, a quote in the newspaper. I do that every day, you know? And the last one I read, it said, in the immortal words of Satchel Paige, don't look back, something might be gaining on you.
Yep.
And that's how I feel about the animal shelter too.
Well, I'm gonna agree with everybody here on the need to move forward, okay? The animal shelter has not been a priority to me for a long time because we do have other needs. There's more than one way to skin a cat.
Please don't use that terminology, that really makes me sick.
I'm sorry, Ms. Perkins. But that's the difference, I love animals.
Jim.
I've raised animals for all my life. I've had cats, dogs, rabbits, goldfish.
Do the cats have their skin?
I'm ready to shave one right now, but anyway. There are other ways to do things and invest all the money at one time. Gary brought up a good point. When we first donated, donated the million dollars, one of the things we were gonna do was try to get a fundraiser. We put that out as an incentive to get people active on trying to raise, uh, some funds. I, I don't know if we have any or not, alright? We can build, I believe, if we get an engineer to look at it, we can start an animal shelter, probably invest a million and a million and a half dollars the first year or so on the current site we have. Then start working on the garage. We can put in a facility that is adequate and usable, I think, in a short period of time. If we have to look at repairing the garage in the PSA office, we're talking about another million dollars. So we bought this property back here to, uh, put in our garage. I'd like to see it eventually be moved. I've talked to Mr. Meadows and, uh, to our super, school superintendent and asked them to give me a tour of the garage they have over on, uh, Cambria so I can see what kind of space and activity they do over there. I'd like to combine the two garages. I've always been for consolidating services. So I feel if we take the million and a half, or a million dollars right now, get our plans, get things started and then stage the building out, maybe over three or four years. But get an immediate facility we can use immediately that's at least twice or three times what we have. I, I think I'd like to get started that way. In the meantime, try to raise funds. In the meantime, not have to buy any more property. Now, that's kinda how I look at it. But I'm not an engineer and I think we need to have somebody tell us what infrastructure we need to get started so we have that done on the initial phase and how we can stage it out without having to buy property. One other thing was brought to my attention, and I don't know how it'll serve the board, but I'd like to find out what operations does our current garage do? And can maybe some of that be found out for a period of time while we build a garage? Okay, I have this property back here. So we can maybe tear that down, that building and open up that space?
You mean like outsource, um, the garage?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what all they do there. And I'd like to find that out. And, uh, you know, see where we're at.
Well, the only thing I have to say about, I guess I'm very, very frustrated because whenever I hear, well, we'll build something, we can always add on. I've heard that over and over again about schools and it's never happened.
Let me say this, alright?
You have to have a dedicated fund to do that.
Let's have, let's have a program where we get started in a plan to maybe finish this in two or three years, but to get a usable facility now. Start and, you know, you can add dog runs and I don't know how much space cats take. I don't know how many animals we're going to try to hold there. You know, I think this is all part of the plan. But if we're averaging thirty-six or thirty-three a month, how many are returning away? Now, cats are a totally different story because we're handling them. But are we turning a lot of animals away at that? So maybe if we aren't?
You can't, you can't turn animals.
Okay. But we're not a hundred percent capacity. You look, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, they can't send them out, you heard.
So, so let's build a facility that'll hold fifty dogs or sixty dogs. And I don't know what cats take, you know?
Well, isn't that why we did this? Well, isn't that why we did this, so we had a plan that would be a plan that we could use? Isn't that why we did this?
I wasn't so much involved in that, so I can't tell you, you know, I...
Yeah, let me, let me say something about the garages. I cannot see any way that you want to be able to put all the schools' buses in there with what the county has got. I don't think that is going to happen, I don't think it can happen, I don't think we have enough land for it to have. So if you look at that, then, you know, let the school for right now take care of their, the buses before they're taken care of on that. And, you know, if we can build a facility back here that will alleviate, alleviate, I can't say it, inhale.
Get rid of.
Yeah. If we can get rid of of half of what they're doing, you know, if they could service half of it, maybe we can handle half of their extra bus traffic. So, you know, because get buyable land back here, that's gone.
Right.
We got everything that we can get back here. And then when I look at this inside of your handout, I look at something that is built on land that we already have, doesn't require any extra money. It does require us to maybe start moving some of our county garage site, which is on the backside of that. There's no reason that this thing can't start.
Right now.
But I think we need to have a start date set. And really, you know, I really think we can come up with a whole lot of dollars if we just put it out there and ask for matching funds. You know, we may even come up with somebody, you know, in the county that passes away and leaves their money. You know, town of Christiansburg, just two years ago, three years ago, got enough money over, I don't know, it's in the millions to put the road across one fourteen, to put that bridge across it, which they're doing. From one lady who said she wanted to beautify, and the first rendition they gave them, family said, "No, this is not enough for this lady, we want her to have something really nice." So you never know, and I've known that lady for a long time. She had more money than I thought she had, but that had nothing to do with this, that, or the other, it's just the fact that the possibilities are there and we'll just reach out and touch them and give people, you know, somebody, and we may have to put this that we will match funds up to a million dollars of three, is what it takes to do it, because somebody might come in and buy the whole ball of wax. And if they do, if they come in and gave us three million dollars and we have to match it with three million dollars, we'd be kind of in a pickle, I think.
Bill will have to have staff.
So you would definitely have to have a point, we match up to a million dollars and at that point, we quit. So, yeah. I just think we need to start, I really think we do need to start on something.
I think we do.
And I don't know exactly how this building lays here, whether we can start, can we ship out what animals we have and get some other place to take care of them while we're building something? See, that would be a problem to me.
That's going to be a challenge.
I don't know how, I don't know how you would, how you would handle that if you built on the same site.
I think we should build in front of the garage towards the road is where we ought to start.
Well, I'd like to hear from somebody that you do exactly what we were talking about as to whether we can actually build there and still have animals there. I can't imagine that happening, but if it will happen, I'm all for it, but we need to know, we need to know those things.
Well, that because, well, may I speak, Mr.?
You may, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you very much.
You have five minutes, huh?
Please. I was thinking about that matching dollar for dollar and I wrote myself a note that says, "We don't know what it is if you just say dollar for dollar." I think it's just like anything else you do. Whether you're building a church or what you're building that you're going to get donations for. And I agree, I think this is wonderful to ask people, and I think there are people here who will give. I think you can also set up an endowment with the funds that people give and then have that endowment really take care of the operations of the animal shelter for the most part. But at this point in time, I believe it's the responsibility of this board to build an animal shelter for the citizens of Montgomery County, it's their money that we're using. And I believe that we have to start and say, okay, we're going to get those architects and engineers back in here, we're going to look at this building, we're going to see what goes on. We're going to be sure that we're getting what I consider a good price in constructing it. And at the same time, say, okay, what we're doing is we are also taking donations, whether it's to set up an endowment or to build a facility. And I think they will come in and help us, but...
And that, how much is, I know that one of the things, and I voted against it at the time, so I don't want to take credit for something I didn't vote for, but when the vote was set aside to set aside the million dollars, that was one of the things that said we were going to bring in matching money. One of the things I would like to know is, how much matching money have we brought in so far since that million dollars?
Carol, have we brought in any?
No, we haven't done a cap.
Because we haven't done any kind of capital plan. And we haven't done, we haven't gone out and solicited money for the animal shelter.
I will say that the Friends of Animal Care and Control are constantly doing projects, but the county itself is not...
Done anything, right, yeah. I, I think we've just batted this around too long. I think it's like one of those things, you got to fish or cut bait, and I think we need to do it right this, right now. I don't think that the more we sit around and talk about it, the more we say, okay, well, we can do this, well, we can do that, well, we can do something else. Well, heaven sakes, there's seven of us and every one of us thinks there's something we can do. But we got to come together and we got to do something. Do we want to pursue public-private partnerships? Do we want to, how much time is that going to take? Do we want to go ahead on the land we've got? If you look at the plans that were originally drawn, yes, we can do it. If you notice, it says the county garage, but at the same time, there are some other buildings, storage buildings and things like that on that same land to which we can shift some of that activity. How long is, how long did we say it would take to build an animal shelter? Eighteen months at the max, maybe?
To be honest, we, Carol, do you remember what was in that plan from two thousand nine?
It's probably eighteen to twenty-four months, but the plan that was put together requires the property where the garage is currently set.
Right, right, and so the thing is, can you not move it around on that land at all? Because all you have to do is bring those architects back in and say, okay, where can we, where can we put it?
Are you speaking about the animal shelter and moving it, so that...
Yeah, see right there.
Yeah, part of the design, Jason, you helped me here, you need to, but part of the design has always been to try and maximize the visibility.
Right.
That meant getting it as close to that front property and part of the value of that parcel that's next to the triangle where our property is, the visibility from the bypass.
Hey, Jason, use the page up on there and go back, there, there, that way you can see a little bit better what Carol's talking about.
The triangle there is our property, the adjacent property to it, and probably what you're looking at there in the handout has, shows that it is better situated to be seen from the bypass. And part of the whole design with shelter planners, if you all will remember, that's all he does, is build animal shelters throughout the United States.
Yeah.
His designs are all about how do you increase adoptions, because it's all about reducing the euthanasia, being able to put in education programs, being able to maximize the space for volunteer groups, for others. It's about how to reduce your labor costs in the long haul with the finishes, and so it's really built and designed by a person whose entire focus is on how you build the best animal shelter, the most cost-effective in the long term. Now, when you put that in mind, you think about, and I will tell you, the first time he did that design, he placed the animal shelter on the adjacent property because he felt that was the best visibility for the goal of increased and ultimate adoptions. We had to tell him, we don't own that property, you need to go back and set it here, and that required the property where the garage is currently set.
Well, Carol, tell me something, see the two wings that are out there on this, this one?
Okay, yeah.
The two wings, now, are they part of the original design?
They're part of the original design and they're kennels, those are a lot of kennels.
Okay, that's what I wanted, I wanted to know.
And then there's a courtyard area between, and it was, the kennels were angled because they wanted, you essentially get it to a point where you don't have dogs, when you have dogs that face each other, you have a lot of like barrier aggression that happens, and the whole point of his designs is to try to reduce that barrier aggression that happens in animal shelters. So we don't have things like, in one of the pictures that wasn't shown, you had an ear that was bitten off from a dog that was adjacent to another dog because the chain, the dog got through the chain link because it wasn't secure properly, so we had an ear bitten off. We've had toenails that have been pulled out because the chain link wasn't, you know, so it's that barrier, because the dogs are doing that barrier aggression piece, that's the part that they're trying to reduce with a design like that.
Well, I just wanted to be sure that that was all part of the original design to have that happen.
Right, and he used a formula in terms of how big do you make it, how big do you make the animal shelter? And it's much like when you design any buildings, I mean, you don't build, you build a core that addresses those things. We've heard it before in schools, we'll build the core for six hundred, you could add on later. Well, you have the core of your facilities that need to stay pretty much the same, no matter how big you make them, but the formula he was using was maximizing in terms of our population, we all know our population has now exceeded Roanoke counties. And it looks at days in the shelter, times a percentage for your population. So, I mean, he just didn't go out, I want everybody to know, and just sort of draw something on a piece of paper. It was done around, what can you anticipate? How long do you expect to be able to house the animals? And then what do you want to see in terms of the core for the services and programs you want to provide?
And just to, just to, you know, when you look at the office that's there, you know, I know some of you have been there, maybe not everybody has, I'm not sure, but the, you know, if you look at the actual building now, you have, when you walk in, there's an office and then there's kind of a side office with a little restroom, okay? That's where the flooding comes in for one, so you have animal control officers, you have volunteers, all trying to conduct business in this one spot. So we have adoptions going on, you have animal control officers trying to deal with bite case, you know, people coming in for bite cases or reclaims. There's nowhere private that anyone can have a conversation with a citizen about, to do their job professionally. And that, that's unfair to the county staff as far as professionalism goes. I mean, they need to have a place to be able to take citizens aside and explain to them, without them feeling demeaned in front of a room full of volunteers that are trying to do adoptions, you know, that's just, it's not right. And then you add on to the fact that if it's raining, then we might have a river coming through the office, that, you know.
Let me go back to answering your question, Ms. Perkins. You can always move stuff around, I mean, you can always move it somewhere. But when you do that with this particular facility, you're losing part of what we went to shelter planners in beginning to get.
Right, thank you.
Well, that means, that already belongs to us, isn't that right?
Right, no, no way, Carol.
Okay.
Looking at that diamond up there?
The triangle?
Triangle, I mean, yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to, personally, I'd like to get an engineer to look at that site and see how close we could get to that garage. Visibility, I know you say is important, okay? But I don't think we need to reveal space. The site has been there since nineteen seventy-five, I think if we bring it to the road, a little better signage than what we have, especially take the landfill sign off of there, along with our pool, I don't like that together too well. But, you know, I'd like to have an engineer, just look at the site and say, okay, we can build X amount of square feet of animal shelter if we bring that line down closer to the garage, if we, you know, try to utilize some of the space on the side. How much room do we have there to do that?
Did you look at this?
Yeah, I'm looking at it, but I don't see those things very well.
Well, this one's better than just the thing that's on the...
That kind of tells you how much room they got.
Well, I know, but I don't, I...
Yeah, I would suspect that you could move it back a little bit, but on that triangle.
Can you, can you sit down with me and measure that out?
We can sit down and measure, I was going to say, what I think is more important is us getting started on some kind of a plan in order to raise some money. And I don't think we need to have a board of supervisors top priority or something that we're responsible for or that this group back here is responsible for. I think we're supposed to have something that all of us will be responsible for. And in raising dollars, I will be very willing to help do that. If anyone would like to take me up on it and we'll get together, as many of us as we think we may need, and see what we can put together and start raising some money. I have been known to raise a little bit for different folks and I, I think we can, we can find a space that, you know, we'll get some dollars. I don't, you know, until we get started, I don't know how many, but we'll get enough dollars to be significant and then we'll be, you know, we can do the insides of this building enough, I assure you, to furnish it. I don't think we'll pay a mere a nickel for furniture.
No, I...
Just, just by doing it in the right way.
Well, I, I think about, you know, when we were doing the library down at Netwell and I happened to go in there and help bang down those walls, I thought I was going to die before I got out of there. But at the same time, remember, you have to start with something. We have to say, all right, we're going to build this animal shelter, we would like to have it on this land, but maybe right at this point, we don't want to take the garage down. Can we move this someplace, can we move it around a little bit so it works? If you can't, well, then we, you know, we got to plant next, next plant. But what you have to have is, you have to let people know, here's what it looks like, here's how much it's going to cost, here's what it's going to provide. And then you have people, now, will you be willing to donate funds to help us either staff it, set up an endowment to operate it, it says right here on this little sheet.
The only and possibly the biggest thing that I see that we keep, you know, we could put the front there and build that one side and leave this off until we get that done, if we need to, and this other arm then can come out within the same contract, it's just that they would...
Phase one, phase two.
Right, that's what I've been trying to say.
Put on later, and that one, we can put in our own, what's that?
Well, I know, but I still think, what worries me tremendously is that we don't ever get around to doing the second one.
Well, if we have it in a contract, we got to...
Well, we'd contract it off.
Yeah.
You know, if we can raise the money, we will contract it off.
I know, but we don't do it. We'll look at some of these other things that Bill brought up, you know, gosh, the storm water's coming up or, you know, we got these SRO officers and I believe that there is a real problem there at Falling Branch and to protect our children. And I feel the same way too, that we have to, you have to let people know what you're going to build, where you're going to build it, how much it's going to cost, what, you know... you know, everything there is about it. And it says right in here, it doesn't, the numbers it gives us, these estimates do not include an increase in operating costs or staffing. That's why I say even people can make donations year after year for operating costs and, and they will do that too, but...
If, if they build it, they will come.
You have to build it and you have to start building it. They need to see it come out of the ground and then they will donate money for it.
There's a way, there's a way to do that, um...
Yeah, it's on the chart.
Yeah, but you have a...
Look at what, well, look what's happened down in that building. We started with that library and along came people who wanted to do the rest of it. Well, it's the same thing though, they saw us and we started out a million and a half for that library, but we, right here, out of ourselves, said, oh no, we're gonna give three, what was it, three and a half million?
I don't know, it was a pretty good chunk.
Yeah, it was three and a half million, I believe.
Well, it's a few years later too, maybe that'll help.
No, it wasn't.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, we've been debating this issue, issue for a long time and I think that we have, we have agreed that we need to move forward. And I need to ask Mr. Meadows, have you heard enough from this conversation, maybe that the staff can come back with several ways that we can pursue this, whether it's private, public partnership, whether it's moving the garage, whether to come back to give us four or five things that we can look at and support to, to move one way or the other?
What I'd like to do is to spend some time with staff and develop a timeline of next steps.
Yeah.
And bring that back to the board. Um, there are a couple of items, um, that I've heard tonight, you know, we've talked about the fundraising.
Yeah.
Well, I could say, if you can make heads or tails out of what we've been talking about, you ought to be joining, you ought to be joining Houdini. I don't like that. If you don't know who the Houdini is, one of these guys will tell you.
They actually teach that in county manager school, but, uh, no, it's, there are some challenges, but fundraising is an issue. I know that the, what I've heard as far as, we need to go back and assess the site again and see if there are any opportunities for phasing a construction that would allow us to do a couple of things at the same time. Um, I did hear, you know, how much money do we have left over and how much could we possibly use from capital? We could also put some numbers together on if we did a lease purchase or, you know, what an annual cost would be. The, the, the pro of a lease purchase or even a PPA type arrangement with financing is, you know, your costs, instead of a big lump of money at one time, you're making payments. The downside is that that is gonna be considered debt. It is, it is debt, that's what it is. Uh, but that may allow us to transition in and ease into something as opposed to taking a huge chunk at one time. Um, it's been good discussion, I made a lot of notes. Um, I appreciate Jason and the volunteers being here.
I say one more question.
Sure.
I think the other thing we, we need to be real sensitive on is that if, if we do go into a capital campaign and a fundraising piece, that we have to define the relationship upfront between the volunteer group and the county because if we go for grants, if we go, that has to be clearly defined from the outset. You can't change it midway through if you're gonna do something. So if we realize, you know, if we do, if we start one way and we decide, oh, that's not working because we're not raising enough money and the county's just gonna pay for it all and run it all, then...
Right.
That defeats the purpose of taking the time to apply for the grants and to request the money and all that stuff.
Well, and one of the big challenges that we've talked about as a staff is, you know, county, the county staff is certainly not experts in fundraising. We know people that we can talk to about how to do it, but we don't know how to do it per se. You guys aren't fundraisers, you guys are the ones keeping that shelter going for us and we certainly appreciate that, so there's...
We're fundraisers on a very small level.
Right, so, so there's gotta be some discussion about that. The good news there is, and I will say this to Supervisor Creek comment earlier, there are people in this county that have indicated in prior discussions that they're willing to step up. I think one of the things, you know, when the million dollars was set aside, I know that the board said, well, we've set aside a million dollars, you know, that's a signal to some others to move forward. Folks aren't gonna pull out their checkbook until we can sit down and say, we're gonna be digging a foundation in six weeks, six months, six, I mean, they're not gonna give money to something that they don't have any clue as to when we're gonna start. That's one reason I wanted to, to say this evening, that we've got to begin to move forward because if the pieces are gonna fall in place, the first piece that has to fall into place is, are we committed to moving this forward?
I have a question too. Have we applied for any grants?
Not, not at this point because we don't have a relationship defined. We don't, we don't have a clear definition of how the new animal shelter is gonna be run. So I, I can't put a friend's name out there and a county's name as a code, a code, a code, yeah, it's weird or whatever. You know, I can't, I mean, I can't put this out there together without knowing exactly what, what the relationship's gonna be.
And how are we gonna know that?
We...
That's a piece that's gotta move as well. That's a piece that's gotta move as well.
So that's, that's, that's my big question, the other.
Yep.
Absolutely, that's a big part.
And that would seem to me to be one of the first parts.
Craig, I was gonna ask also, I know that we've gotten this prize from a fellow who does nothing but build animal shelters and maybe, it's me, it's just very hard for me to get my head wrapped around it. Carol's tried to help us some about the cost of an animal shelter being 3.1 million dollars. If it's hard for me, it's gotta be hard for the citizens that I won't have to explain this to. And so I was wondering, one, if we could also look at possible, other possible builders that might be able to assist us. I, I guess this was one bid, who else is out there? Um, it, to be able to, maybe a local contractor says, I can do this and I can do it for a whole lot cheaper.
Well, we've actually had a local contractor take a look at the plans just to try to validate cost estimates and, you know, factoring in some other considerations, it's, it's pretty darn close. I mean, and I do agree and that's, that would be the thing with an RFP or whatnot, when you put that out, you're gonna get information back to, to validate it. Um, but I don't think we're gonna find that if we do what was recommended in that, um, facility study, that it, uh, we may find a hungry contractor that, I mean, we, we got very fortunate with the Public Safety Building and found a contractor that was willing to work with us and saved us some money. You know, when we put it out on the street, I, I don't know. But the numbers in just a, in, and Mary, you may wanna address that a little bit, just from talking with the local contractor who may have, may have an interest in the future in working with us, they just brought some numbers back and it was pretty close.
Pretty close, yep. I mean, it's gonna cost money and if you're gonna do it and you're gonna do it right, it's gonna have a price tag on it. Um, what, if you go back and read the history, one of the reasons that this shelter is failing is when it was done, it was done with the cheapest materials available and they just, they haven't held up.
Nothing 70s.
Yeah, and the range wasn't right, nothing was really looked at as far as, you know, when you're gonna use something like that, you know, what's gonna happen when you're gonna use it? So it was probably, and I don't know who did it, I don't know if they had any, you know, experience, but, um, this comes from experience. This plan came from experience. Now, there's probably people that can, you know, take the plan and, you know, do something with it, but we've got the plan, we paid for this to have it done and I guess my thing is, we just need to get it done. And I agree with Gary, we can have fundraising campaign and do all that, but we have to have a commitment from the county that, okay, you know what, we're gonna have groundbreaking on this day, we've already sent out RFP, this is what we've gotten in, this is where we're gonna go, then you can do those things, but we need to have like a, are we just gonna talk about it again and again and again? Are we gonna have like some kinda, you know, date out there where we say, okay, maybe by such and such a date, we can agree if we're gonna send this out for bid or, or what are we gonna do? Or such and such a day, we're gonna have a groundbreaking or, you know, we need to set, sort of have a timeline so that this doesn't keep going by and by and by. This is like December 2009 and this is now July 2013. So I guess my frustration comes from being on the board and trying to do something since 1996. I think that's why I'm so frustrated. So maybe if I can just like, if we can sort of get out there, I think everybody wants to do something, so maybe if we can just, you know, have some, maybe the staff could come back with a timeline after they have the recommendations for the funding and we could decide together how to go. And I'm jumping in with you, Gary, I mean, I'm all for raising money. I mean, I think that's a great thing to do and have things named after people and I think we could bring revenue in, but we also have to have an investment of county. This thing ain't gonna run by itself, we know that. It's gonna cost money because it's not what we have now, it's going to be a greater cost. But this is 2013 and our county is big. So we need to go ahead and we need to provide for the services that are needed. So, um, I say let's go for it.
Mary?
Yeah, just, just a couple of quick thoughts, um, is that, one, my, my main priority with this is that when, when we move forward, I'll get to that in a second, um, this cannot be done on the cheap. That, that's too often what's happened in the past in this county and then the chickens come home roost.
Mm-hmm.
And we end up paying for, for past mistakes. So, you know, do it right. Um, and that'll be a priority. The second thing is that at least I was hearing, and maybe Mr. Meadows' fuggini ears were better than mine, but there were at least six and, and I think Chris is generally in agreement about moving forward, but with some reservations, um, that there's a commitment by this board from this discussion to move forward as quickly as possible with a groundbreaking. Is that fair to say?
Like have a commitment to do something. You could show it by a groundbreaking, you could show it by a timeline.
And, well, thank you. What I've, what I've heard a couple of times in the discussion is, is a timeline.
Yes.
I'll be more than happy to develop the timeline, but in that timeline is gonna be a groundbreaking.
Yes.
So, yes.
So as quickly as possible, we can get to that point where we will be breaking ground. This will not be five years out.
Right.
Okay, so it'll be before that. Um, finally, you know, as to the fundraising thing, I, I think that's, that's an excellent idea, but it needs to happen concurrently with the, the building, okay? Not, not to necessarily precede it because it's just gonna push everything off. Um, and, and I'll point to the successes that places like the Lyric and also TechPad in downtown Blacksburg have had with Kickstarter projects in which, uh, over the course of two months, I believe, Lyric raised $75,000 in private donations. TechPad raised over $80,000 in private donation, I think it was near 90 by the time it closed and, and actually less than that in about a month, month and a half in private donations. So there, there is a great, um, philanthropic spirit, you know, in this county that will support especially something that's in absolutely dire need. But we need to connect in with those groups to understand how those projects were started, how they were advertised so that people simply hear about this. And the way that you do that is, is you start, is you put it out there and you, you do it as quickly as possible so that the word starts to spread. And, and I agree with, with Mary and I, I sympathize with her frustration as that simply that, you know, we, you know, we've had a plan since 2009, we've known about this problem for, for longer than that. We gotta deal with it. Yeah, and we're gonna have other things, as Mr. Brown pointed out, that are gonna come up and we know about those problems too and we're gonna struggle with how to, how to deal with them because honestly, board hasn't dealt with them in the past along the way. And, and again, these are constant issues that we're gonna have to be dealing with. But as far as this issue is concerned, let's get a timeline, let's get going.
Everybody pretty much in consensus with the timeline and...
Mm-hmm. And how to go about it, funding or whatever.
The only thing I'd like to add to that and that is part of it, of course, is definitely look at that and see, how much space do we have where we can get started? You know, I mean, I'd start digging tomorrow if I know where I was digging.
I wonder how much digging's gonna cost, I guess is...
That'll be part of it, but we've got a million dollars set aside right now, we can start.
I got enough direction tonight that I can spend some time putting some stuff together for you to have further discussion on.
When would we be having further discussion, like, would this be our next meeting or how are we gonna keep this going?
It will be at either the first or second August meeting, depending on, depending on how long it takes to get a couple of pieces of information back, but it will be in August.
Why don't we set it for the second August meeting and that'll give us, yeah, a month and a little bit to get it down and...
Absolutely.
And I would like to know if, if, if anyone wants me to try to head up this thing as far as fundraising.
Be part of the discussion.
I mean, to have the names of those people and, uh, we need to have those people tell everybody that they know and get as many people and we're gonna have to have some meetings and, and decide how to, to attack this thing. Uh, and if we're gonna do it, we need to do it in earnest and, and do it, uh, while, while people are, I've had two phone calls last week. So, you know, I, I know that that is getting to be, one of the bigger things that people call about is, is animal shelter. And so, yeah, we need it.
Well, as Mr. Pete pointed out, maybe by the second meeting in August, um, one of the things that, that's gonna be very important is to define the relationship with, with, with the friends.
Yep.
And so perhaps we talk about options at that second meeting in August and then after that, we can go forward with the whole, the whole thing.
And whether, I guess we need to set up a separate final 13C.
Separate. Well, that's one thing we'll be talking about over the next month.
And I set up others for nonprofits at no charge, but I guess I can't do that for this, can I?
No charge.
As long as they don't charge, okay?
Yeah.
That's fine.
We, we need to set up one or use one that's in existence.
Exist.
Yeah.
And so my...
Once we got one of...
Come out.
We need, we need a real credible one that, you know, everybody can...
Craig, just letting you know, Andrew Swoboda.
Thank you, Jason. Well, and the last thing I just wanted to say is thank you to you guys for, for being here tonight. I know you've been here many times before, but I'm hoping that the next couple of meetings will be very productive.
Happy to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
And in the meantime, if anyone wants to donate ahead of time, they can always make their check out to Montgomery County and put on the bottom of the check for the animal shelter, or future animal shelter. Right? And it can be helped for that.
Or note to next meeting.
So if somebody wants to come forward next couple meetings with checks, that'd be great.
That's deductible, huh?
All right, if there's no further discussion on this item, do I have a motion to go to work session?
Second.
Then moved and seconded, roll call please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Paulus?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, the next item is the county attorney's report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just one item, I respectfully requested the board consider adopting the amendment to the zoning ordinance that we had a public hearing on earlier, amending the telecommunities tower catch.
So, Mr....
Second.
Then moved and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Paulus?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Marty. All right, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick items. First, uh, it was mentioned previously and I've communicated this with the board, but we did have a very productive surplus property sale, we could go Friday, uh, return $291,000 to the county's coffers and put for properties hopefully back on the tax rolls for various uses. That was a very good day. Certainly thank the folks that came forward, uh, to participate in that. And as we have, uh, other surplus properties and, uh, needs to move those along, we may consider an auction process again. We were very pleased with the turnout and the interest, uh, that we had. Uh, also wanted to mention to you, um, that our road viewers tour to, uh, look at, uh, various roads in the county is this Friday. We'll be meeting at my office around 8:30. Uh, we have a van secured and I promise not to go too fast and we'll go out around the various parks of the county and take a look at that. Um, I do have as one of the stops, the animal shelter. Uh, that's not a road issue, but it's certainly an issue while we're out and about and I've got everybody in the van, we'll, we'll take a stop and, and look at that as well. If you have any roads in particular that you want to make sure we include, if you'll mention those to me tonight or send me an email tomorrow, we are putting together an agenda. But if there's any in the six-year plan roads, the revenue sharing roads are included in that. I think there's a couple of others. But if there's any in particular you want to make sure I get on the list, just mention those to me and I'll make sure those are included. Well, I think it's there, but I'll make sure. Also, I just... The app's on it. Got them both. Last thing I just want to say is thank you for the in-depth discussion on the animal shelter facility tonight. Now, I know my job as county administrator is usually to bring you recommendations on how to address tough issues, and I know this is a tough one, but I also know that there's been a lot of differing opinions on the board over the last couple of years on how to move forward. But I did hear enough tonight to put together a plan and I look forward to bringing it back to you next month. That's it.
Supervisor Brown.
Okay, the first thing, I received a call from a constituent who lives on High Top Road. And from the Huckleberry Ridge Development, they were doing some burning over there and the ash and stuff from this burning traveled over to their property. This is getting on clothes, their cars and et cetera. I don't know whether it's anything that the county can do about it as far as... I think they have a right to burn, but when it travels a great distance and get over individuals' cars and things. Wait, this lady explained to me that she got up Sunday morning and it took a couple hours to clean her car before she could even take her to church. There's that much ash and stuff that had come across. And it's not only her, it's several of her neighbors down there too. And she asked whether it could be something done about it. And I don't know whether it can, I'm just laying it out here, bringing it to the board's attention.
Derry, do you mind if I recognize a staff person?
Yeah.
Derry's still here and...
Yeah, that's good.
Supervisor Brown had mentioned that that might be an issue that he was going to bring up of concern, and Derry, do you mind just telling him what we know so far on that issue?
Neil Turner announced a site visit out there today to look at the grading site and the burning pit that's been constructed and used for the burning of the debris, the trees and brush and so forth out there. I don't know if you have the additional maps and so forth that I handed out to you. First, let me say to you publicly is that this is not a zoning issue. We have no regulations regarding this at this point that I'm aware of.
That's just to look at, and these are the maps you can keep. The stapled brochure is for everybody to look at, the map is yours, the big map is yours to keep. We didn't make multiple copies of the eight and a half by 11.
So when the contractor escorted us to the burning pit, Mr. Turner advised me that this pit was a classic textbook example of the way to do this type of burning. I gave you the map to try to show you the approximate location of the pit itself. I might be off just a touch, but not very much. Based on the proposed rhythm and so forth that was on the map, I think we're pretty close. The closest house that I could come up with was at number 540 Merrimack Road, which is the gentleman who lives adjacent to the entrance to the site. So if you can see that, 540 Merrimack. The next adjacent, the next closest structure, I believe, to the east would be 937 High Top. There's two manufactured homes that I believe Jeannie Stossers Group owns that property there now, 935 and 937. Well, 937 is about 1,000 feet from that burn pit. Now, obviously, a little closer than 1,000 or somewhere 600, 700 feet is more small home park. But the lady that complained first, it sounds like Mr. Brown's story I got, that he got from the lady he talked with, I also talked with her and a couple of other folks. She lives just to the south of Forest Park right there, that smaller mobile home park. They, from what I can determine, there are no regulations that have been broken here. This contractor has done a good job as far as burning appropriately and that sort of thing. I don't know of anything else that can be done. I think they did make at least one goodwill visit and talked with the lady that Mr. Brown spoke with. I do not have direct communication from the contractor, but I have heard through an agent that that one visit was made and some consideration was given to that individual. So that's all I know. I did give you the photographs here. The way this thing works, the way Neil explained it to me, if you can see in those pictures, they've got this deep hole that's constructed and there's a ditch that goes out the bottom of it basically, and they push this, these trees and brush and so forth in there. They light the fire at the bottom and it feeds air in from the bottom. Once they get that thing good and hot, and it burns up the hill and basically just leaves very little. It's because it burns so hot. And by using that method, they say it doesn't take really a long time to burn the debris. Now, this daily rain that we've been getting has been a positive and a negative. It hinders them some from burning, but it is a good time to burn to keep things down and controlled, in a controlled environment as far as not catching anything else on fire and that sort of thing. I am not an expert in this field, but if you have other specific questions, I'll try to answer those, but this is a huge site that they're grading and clearing to try to prepare for construction. We've issued building permits for 248 apartments so far, and that's in this first phase that they're going to build.
So I think we say all this, all this to say, we don't directly have the authority to do anything. I mean, it appears the contractor's doing what he should do. That being said, you know, Derry and Neil did go out. I'm sure comments will be relayed to the contractor about the neighbor's concerns, but it does appear in terms of the way they're handling this, they're handling it the way that they're supposed to.
Yes, sir. Pinnacle Construction is the contractor for the whole project. And I've talked with Ben Treis, who is the project manager for Pinnacle. Mr. Parks hired him early on to manage this for him. He's very considerate, he's very responsive, and he has had a lot of communication with the grading contractor, which is Bolling out of Dublin, Fairlawn area. And Mr. Bolling, I think, is the one who talked with the one lady that sounds like you and I both have spoken with. There's not much else that can be done. What they are trying to do, what Ben told me today, they're trying to get everything clear that needs to be cleared so all of this can be burned now and have it over with. Even the part that's to be future development, they are clearing so that when they get under construction, they won't have to disturb anybody else or very little disturbance will occur in the future. So they're hoping that, you know, if the rain kind of backs off a little, they can finish this up and have it completed. But it, I mean, it's a problem. If that was happening to me, I'd be concerned too.
Well, thank you. I mean, when I spoke to the lady, I told her that I'm sure people are inspecting what they're doing down there and that I doubt that anything could be done, you know? But I would bring it to the county's attention.
They have purposely left as much of the trees around the perimeter until the very last minute to remove those to try to help keep some of the spread of that ash and dust down. Obviously, I don't know if you've been down that way lately, but for those of you who have not, there's a major difference in the look of Merrimack Road right there in front of Forest Park. It's all cleared out now. And basically, the contractor told me today that that had to be done in order to provide the site, since they're going to need to get the VDOT approved entrance installed and that sort of thing. Didn't know if they were going to have to take out a few more trees or not. But they're trying to save what they can, but meet all the other regulations that are in place as well, and leave these last few trees that have to come out till the very end to try to help in this manner here. So I'm sorry, I don't have anything better to report to you.
But thank you for the information that you...
And thank you for staying late, I appreciate you.
No problem.
This came up late in the day, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I've got a question. So it was just on the cart, wasn't like a health concern, like asthma or...
She's talking about breathing in the smoke.
That's what I would be concerned about.
They couldn't sit on the porch and that they, I think she said it would get on their clothes and so forth, you know, the ash and stuff. And said sometimes you could sit on the porch and depend on which direction the wind was going, that they could smell it and would have to go in the house or something along those lines. And then she told me too that her neighbor had had some lady down there from the EPA.
Yeah.
But she said, well, I ain't been able to get a hold of her yet. And I'm sitting like, from the EPA, you know? And I thought that might have been that lady right there down to take the picture, but it wasn't you, somebody else. But she couldn't, she didn't, hadn't got a hold of that neighbor yet to find out what those people, or if they were from the EPA, said.
When this first began, I got three complaints basically. And one was from the young lady you talked to, and then two others. And they were basically complaining about breathing the smoke. And one gentleman was very, very nice and respectful, but he was having to leave his windows open at night because he didn't have an air conditioner. And the smoke was coming in depending on what the wind was blowing. So you can realize when you're that close, it's going to be tough when they're doing that kind of burning. But these contractors appear from an amateur's point of view to be doing the very best they can, given the amount of debris that has to be burned.
Right, so in other localities, I guess, like what do they do? Make the contractor haul it away to a common burn pit or something? I mean, I don't really know what you do.
It can be hauled to the landfill, but it's very, very expensive to haul that debris to a landfill, pay to put it in there and then fill up the landfill with...
Most of them burn it, just like these folks are doing. The difference between most folks and what these people are doing, they're doing it on a very large scale. There's a lot of trees.
Neil, actually, we got back to the office today. Neil did call someone in Roanoke County that he knew and indicated that between, I believe he said between May and September in Roanoke County were banned. You could not burn during that time, and it was because of a certain designation they had for air quality there.
Yeah, their ozone's worse, but ours isn't too good, air quality, Montgomery County.
Yeah, their air quality's not so good because of the valve.
And, okay, that makes sense. So, you know, there are regulations in some places evidently that deal with it, but I don't think we have any that I can find anyway.
You have an option, you can adopt an open burning ordinance. Now, this wouldn't stop them from doing what they're doing, but you could regulate it a little bit more than we do currently. You could, like, you can limit the size possibly. You can also, when it's, you can stop, you can tell them they can't burn on days where the wind's blowing towards populated areas. Now, I don't know whether the complaint in this case would be considered a populated area or not, it could be one or two.
Yeah, but I could, I understand what you're saying. You start burning at 8 o'clock at night, there's no wind. At 12 o'clock, the wind is blowing this way.
Exactly, that was going to be my next comment too. Once you get that type of a fire going, there's no putting it out until it burns out.
Right.
Do you know approximately what percentage that they've already burned or what they've got to burn?
I think they've got most of the property cleared. I was out there into last week.
It appears to be, yes, sir. There's a little bit along the perimeter that Ben was talking about with me about today, but there's very few trees left that have to come out and go into that burn pit. Now, they did have some limbs and trees and stuff up at the top that were going to be pushed in, but I think the majority of it's completed. It shouldn't be that much longer.
Yeah, I think it's, I think they're nearly done. And I do think the contractor's been very responsive, but it's just one of those situations where between the rain and the volume, it's created a few issues.
Martin, do we have anything, do we have any regulations at all about open burning right now? Is there anything about like public notice for burnings of this size?
Well, they have to go through the Fire Marshal. And there's code restrictions on when you can do it, like during the seasons. Like when it's dry, you can't do it. If we had here, no rain at all, the county can issue a declaration. I think Neil's done it in the past.
But is there anything about like notifying the adjacent landowners or anything like that?
Sure, the Fire Marshal, they got to be so far back, almost like usually 500 feet, and I think they're...
I believe they are, and Neil said today that he'd also...
It's mainly fire danger things, like starting woods and fire, or structures on fire. It's not, they're not simply smelling the smoke. Now, we have nuisance laws that could apply. There's probably private nuisance that anyone can take against someone else who's doing something on their property, whether it works of trespass, not in the physical sense, but in more in an air quality or crossing over, they could bring in action. There's public nuisances, but it's got to be more on a larger scale. And if this would fit into that, if it's only one or two houses and not a bigger area. But we do have a nuisance provision on our code where you can ask the public health officer, which would be, that kind of health department head official would go out there and look and see if there's a health problem with what's going on. And if there is, they can shut it down. It'd be a health thing, it would not be, it wouldn't be so much ash on a car, it'd be more of a breathing.
But like asthma, anyone that has a compromised breathing, you know, it's not good for them to be inhaling smoke.
So I mean, if it continues, we could ask the health department guy to go down and look.
I was thinking specifically of the future about mandating for, I don't know how we would define it, maybe that's something that the planning department would be, could look into, but mandating at least notification of adjacent property owners that there will be large, you know, large-scale burning going on. And then if there are, they anticipate problems or health department, health issues or something like that, and they could bring those issues. They would at least know about that instead of finding out after it's already begun.
And one thing with those notices, it would give them a contact person to...
What I just mentioned is, under state law, you're allowed to adopt the local burning ordinance if you want to, and that's one of the things you could put in there. And the other thing you do is you require a permit every time they burn. And the permit would just be a way to let the authorities know what they're doing. And then, and also you could limit the size of it if you think it's going to be an issue. You also make sure the Fire Marshal would be involved somewhere, but I think Neil would be the one who would do such program. He would regulate and make sure. And one of the things you could do is make sure everyone's been notified, especially those in the prevailing moon patterns at that time of year, so. That's something we could look at and bring back. I mean, it wouldn't help her at this point, but it could be something in the future.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking about for the future.
Yeah. We could do that.
I think that's good.
Neil was told today that, and he shared with me, that the contractor is taking the time to call the Sheriff's Department every day that there's burning activity in there. They do have someone on site to monitor that burning 24 hours a day.
Yeah, that's part of their program.
The contractor does, not the sheriff, yeah.
Correct. They only notify the Sheriff's Department, contractor has someone on site, yes, sir.
I think maybe in the last meeting or the week before that, I was driving up and I saw, I didn't know what it was until you mentioned it. I mean, it looked like a major structure was on fire and it was kind of behind the hospital.
I saw that.
Yeah, and it was the night where it was kind of glowing, it was kind of a moon and everything was kind of glowing that night.
Halloween.
I'm sure, if you see this pit, if you see this pit, if it was full, I'm sure it'd have to be glowing.
That's all.
Thank you, and thank you.
Another item that I do have, and I don't know whether you all got a copy of this letter from a Mr. Meadows. It talks about the solid waste collection sites and things like this. But as I read the letter, and it's that, and I'm sure you all read it, maybe because of the requirements that the landfill has put upon us of not being able to accept that stuff, that maybe somebody from the landfill need to come here to explain to us so people would know what's acceptable in those sites and what's not acceptable would be a good, I guess, maybe a good delegation from there if they will come and do it.
Maybe have Mr. Cummins or somebody from the placed authority come and address that.
Yeah, I think that would, not a... Yeah, I think that would not only help this gentleman, but it would help a, a lot of people who were watching. So, oh, that's the reason why, 'cause people think it's the county, it's not the, the landfill. The landfill's what caused us to change our restrictions. And so if they knew, have a little idea of where it was coming from.
Have you seen that there?
That's it for us, sir.
All right, Supervisor Biggs.
Well, first I want to thank my fellow board members for moving the animal shelter forward and to the staff and for Craig's presentation tonight. I feel really good about it, really positive. You know, after all these years, I think, I think we're, we're really beginning to do something in it, and it's greatly needed. And I thank each one of you for everything you said tonight, because we had really good ideas. And then the only other thing I have to ask is, what about this thing that Marty's talking about, the eagle? Do we know anything about that, or do you have to go back with us on that?
I think about that eagle every time I pass through downtown Christiansburg. We do need to come up with a plan on addressing the eagle. We've got a little bit of time. It does have some issues, but we do need to talk about, one, do we relocate it or do we leave it where it is? And two, and I don't think this is, I don't think there'll be much debate on this. We need to restore the eagle. It does have a root, a hole in the back of it. But yes, let me, let me bring that back to you as well.
Can we talk to the Montgomery Museum about that as well?
I already have, I already have Bob Hoff with the museum. Bob and Marty have kind of been tag teaming me. So yes, we just need to make, we need to put a plan together and address that, but...
I would like to just throw out one idea with regarding the eagle. You know, we, at one point in time, when the courthouse was initially designed, it was gonna be a patio out front that employees were gonna be able to utilize. For various reasons, they closed off that patio because they were worried that somebody might throw up a weapon. And for security reasons, they closed it off. Since that patio was closed off, perhaps we might be able to put the eagle back. And I know it's not gonna be on top of the courthouse, but maybe above there might be appropriate. It was on the top of the old courthouse for, from 1909, I guess it was, until 78.
Thirty years.
And then...
It was there for a long time.
And then from 78 out in front of the old courthouse until now, that might be a, a solution or an idea at least to be able to put it, because we don't have to worry about somebody handling it or doing too much because that patio is now closed off.
I didn't know that, thank you, given that information.
Is that all you got, Marty? Supervisor Tuck.
Couple of things. First, first of all, before I forget, I guess I would move to refer the ham radio, amateur radio issue back to the Planning Commission, see if they can come up with some ideas, see if they, they believe it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And so at this point in time, I'd make that motion.
A resolution.
A resolution, excuse me.
Second.
Moving second, and any discussion? What was the resolution?
In regards to, one of the issues that came up during the Planning Commission was amateur radio and, and the tower, or antennas that are associated with it. And, and one of the things is there's, there was some concerns on the Planning Commission that this regulation in regards to flagpoles and wood, or might affect amateur radio. And I don't think that's the intent, and I read this, I agree with Marty, but it's something that perhaps that we might want to address. We could take a look, see what the Planning Commission thinks. And so that's what the intent of the resolution is.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chairwoman Lottis?
Aye.
So ayes.
Anything else?
Just, and, and two things. One, we had some discussions about the property sale. I, I would like to move that when that $208,000 comes in from the sale of Elston property, that we put that in a separate fund in regards to either reduce the debt, just as all of us, I think, have promised at some given point in time, and/or for future school construction.
Well, it has, it has to be.
It has to be.
It has to be.
And I make that, and I want to make sure it's clear to everybody, because I think there was some questions about what we might do with money and the like. The second is, the, the Texas Hollow Park, that is something that came out of our Parks and Rec. I'd like to see that $47,000 be set aside and allow for potentially Parks and Rec to come forward with some plans of some capital needs, one-time needs that they might have that haven't been addressed in our previous budgets. To me, to use this money for some other things just doesn't seem right. It seems, you know, we're, we're selling a school site and we're setting that money aside for schools. We sold a park that wasn't working, that was being vandalized and people wanted to utilize it. But to me, I'd like to see it set aside. Now, if, if board members don't feel that we need to make the motion to set that $208,000 aside, then so be it. But I would like to see us move forward in regards to the Texas Hollow Road Park. Now, we don't, I'm not saying that we, I'd like to see a presentation of what they think we need and what they would be able to utilize that $47,000 for.
I would second that if that was a motion.
It is.
Moving second, I have a little bit further discussion on that, if I may.
What about the Plum Creek? Was that kind of a park?
It was, it was a former, it was a former green box site.
No, the former green box, and that's what I was gonna mention. Why don't we put that towards purchases and...
Yes, whatever it's for, put it toward that.
And, and the Cinnabar or the Strip, maybe it can go towards Animal Shelter or, since it's over in that general direction. Mend that motion.
Is that, I would accept that friendly amendment if I'm allowed. You are allowed.
No, but still second that. Moving second under the amendment.
I'm gonna vote against this motion, just because it seems too micromanaging and too inconsistent with what potential future needs we might foresee for this money coming forward.
Anybody else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Crete?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Chairwoman Lottis?
Aye.
Six ayes, one aye.
Any requests?
That's it.
Mr. Gabriel?
Uh, the school board is taking a vacation from their regular meetings in July. They usually do, so I have no report.
Supervisor Grede?
Uh, just one thing, and that is that Mr. Brown had the letter there tonight from the gentleman. I have noticed kind of a theme that seems to go along when, when people decide it's time that they're gonna call somebody or write it out. And it seems that about every time, and I've had somehow or another, I've had eight or 10 of them. I don't remember the exact number. This goes back four or five months now, it's wasn't yesterday. But all of them have had to do with scatter rugs. Every one of them had a scatter rug within it that they made the people put back on their vehicle and take it back home with them. And that, I don't know how that's hazardous waste, myself.
Might be flammable.
Well, that's not against the rules. But anyhow, that's, that, that just seems to be a common denominator between the times that we get people hauling about dumping things and, and other times. I don't know if we do anything about it or not, but I would think we could. We're in a sector of rules other than whatever is demanded from our hazardous waste league. But I can imagine that one would be at us.
I guess if we changed the rule, it would cost us, or we have to get, what is it?
The manifest or whatever.
Yeah, manifests from it. And that's from, I guess, all the sites that we have, if we accept those.
I made a note of that. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know, I don't know what puts scatter rugs on the do not take list, so...
But that's, like I said, that's been on just about, maybe two out of 10 that didn't have it.
We'll find out.
That's all.
Ms. Perkins?
Well, Mr. Perkins, I like you a lot. I just wanna say that for the public, so they won't think I was really on your back. But thank you all, because I guess I was a little more vocal tonight about that than I have been in the past. I do believe that whatever you all decided when I was out, that it's good that we're gonna start something and that we thank the administration for agreeing to come back with information to us and also for the discussion we had, because it, it's good when we have so many differing opinions sometimes and at the same time, we can draw ourselves together to try to get a consensus for what needs to be done to a, a great need that we have. And that's not to say that there are other needs too, but we know. So thank you all again for that. And the other thing is, I just thought you might like to hear a few things that occurred at the Social Services Board, because you don't really get any announcements or copies of the minutes or the director's report. But I know that on the last meeting that we had, we had five adoptions. On that particular meeting, when you're talking about the children, simply one family took, I think it was three children, all in the same family to keep them all together. And so it, it, there's a lot of work that goes on. And I'm, the more I'm on that board, and Jim, you were on there before, I am totally shocked at the amount of federal and state regulations that go into making it possible for our citizens to receive these services, plus the amount of money that we give to them and everything else. It's, it's a constant thing to me to, for them to even keep up with the regulations that come down the pipe. But at the end of May, now I don't have the ones for the, you know, for the end of June. At the end of May, there were 5,017 Medicaid enrollees. There were 8,001 Medicaid cases. There's a new program called SNAP, and that's one of the things I've learned about this, that the federal government and the state and the locality has so many of these little deals that you gotta know the language in order to understand it. But the SNAP program is what used to be the food stamp program, as I understand it. There were 3,651 people involved in that. And then there were a number of other things. Carol would certainly know about the tenant funds and people who've been, you know, in the school system know what that's all about. But there, that just is, one, those two things are enough to boggle your mind right there in terms of what they do have to deal with every day. I also, we don't hear as much about adult protective services as we do about child protective services. But now that school is about to start up again, there will be a lot more of both those cases for whatever reason. So anyway, I just wanted you all to be aware of that. And since we don't give you minutes of the meeting, I think we'll talk about that to determine whether or not that's something that we do or can do as far as social services is concerned, okay? But other than that, I have nothing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Well, I have two, two things, bringing up social services for one. We have a very good director there.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And I'm on the Virginia Cares and Rantry Board. And Rantry was needing a new co-convenor. And I had the opportunity to ask Larry to do that, and he acknowledged he'd be very happy to fill that slot.
He's very knowledgeable and he does a good job. As I say, I don't, it boggles my mind. I'm still learning with all the abbreviations, meaning and everything else.
They were supposed to do his dictionary.
Yeah.
I mean, they've got more acronyms than they've ever seen.
Well, I did get somewhat of a dictionary, but it's how to get it in your mind, you know?
The other thing is, I hope Old Sarawood is on our tour. And we need to bring a broom.
Okay.
Okay.
Bring what?
A broom.
Well, you're not gonna riot it, are you?
No. I didn't mean that for somebody else.
Bill, that's not actually that one.
There's a lot of gravel on the top, gotta sweep it off to see how it looks underneath. Every time I go out there, it just picks it up with the traffic. Other than that, that's all I've got this evening. There's no further discussion. I move adjourned.
Adjourned.